And first off, in form of, I would love to thank the staff for the wonderful job they did yesterday at that inauguration. They pulled together a miracle in a matter of a couple of weeks to bring it over to the Hyman Center. It really went well. And thank you to everyone at the staff there who helped out so much and everyone at the Hyman Center also. Let's begin by saying, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. We, the members of the Lafayette Consolidated Council, having been chosen to represent the people of this locality, beg of thee, Almighty God, to enlighten our minds, so that our work will be just and fair in all things. Give us the courage and strength to fulfill our duties according to the laws of the land, and in so doing, fulfilling also thy holy will on earth and in heaven through Christ our Lord. Amen. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Okay, the pledge by Mr. Armory Picknick from Broussard Middle.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone can have a seat, please. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Picknick. We welcome you to the City Council Meeting. As Presiding Officer and Chair, I would like to announce the following. This is a public hearing. To address the council on any item on this agenda, please fill out the request form and submit it to the clerk prior to the call of the agenda. Item on you, or you will not be given the opportunity to speak. Staff assistance is available if needed. Item for submission to the council should be handed to the council clerk, Ms. Veronica Williams, seated to my left in the middle. When addressing the council, state your name and title for official record. The five-minute rules will be in effect. No debating or confrontation statements will be allowed. The front row to my left is for media only. Food and drinks are not allowed in the auditorium. Please silence all phones and electronic devices. Meeting procedures are by resolutions and not by robed rules of order. All documents with referrals to the meetings can be found on the LCG website. And finally, the council encourages your involvement in boards or commissions. If interested, call 291-8800. Cindy, please read.
Election of Chair and Vice Chair in accordance with Section 2-0F-7F of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government Home Rule Charter.
Okay, I need to ask, I want a nomination for 2020 City Council Chair, please. Nomination?
I'd like to nominate Pat Lewis.
Pat has been nominated. Anyone else? Okay, nominations has been closed. Call for vote for the council chair, please.
District 1.
Pat.
District 2.
Pat.
District 3.
Pat.
District 4.
Pat.
District 5. Pat Lewis is the council chair.
Congratulations.
Thank you. That being said, now we, a nomination for the Vice Chair, 2020 City Council.
I'd like to nominate Liz Abear.
Liz nominee, okay, nominated for Liz by Ms. Abear, I mean by Ms. Cook. Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Andy Knockan.
Andy Knockan? Has been, okay, any more nominations?
I'd like to close the nominations.
Nomination has been closed by Ms. Cook. It's called for the role, please.
District 2.
Andy Knockan.
District 3.
Liz Abear.
District 4.
Liz Abear.
District 5.
Liz Abear.
District 1.
Ms. Knockan.
Liz Abear is the City Council Vice Chair.
Congratulations, Ms. Abear. Chair announcements. I would like to wish a happy birthday to City Council Member Glenn Lazar. Tomorrow, tomorrow. A new employee for the city, Mr. Hollis Conway. Can you stand up, please? Be recognized. He is the Director of Community Development. And our new Mayor President, Mr. Josh Gilery, recognize yourself, sir. We wish the, wish they all will be celebrated, January 8th, as a happy birthday to Cherry LeBlanc, Parish Council Administrative Secretary, which she will celebrate on January 14th.
Happy birthday, Cherry.
Any chair announcement from myself? Uh, the only nomination, the only, um, thing I'd like to say is that I appreciate the opportunity from my colleagues to, uh, give me an opportunity to serve as Chair for the new, uh, parish, not, not Parish Council, the new City Council of 2020. Will be a different challenge, a new challenge, I should say. And again, last night, what Mr. Knockan was saying earlier, is that, uh, I congratulate the staff, Ms. Veronica and her staff. I did send her, uh, a message this morning telling her that they did such a great, a great job. They were like party planners. They did so good yesterday. You know, it was really awesome, uh, what they, what they did yesterday to help us make look, they made us look good yesterday. Would you agree, Mayor? Yeah, they made us look good yesterday, so I, I thank her for that, and I look forward to working with the new administration and the new council and the people that's gonna start, uh, the public's gonna come out here and support everything we do. And it may have, we may have some disagreements, but I'd like to make sure that we have disagreement in a good way. And that's always the best thing to do. When you disagree with something, let's be positive in the way we disagree with things. I want you guys to know, we will not be perfect. No one is perfect. But if you, if you see we're making mistakes, just let us know in a good way, and we can move forward. This is what it's all about. Making this city, Lafayette, which is a very unique city, we have all sorts of things. We have good community at fault. When I say community, the service is good, the food, the, the music. Our culture is different from anywhere else in the United States, probably in the world. So let's make sure we make ourselves look good. We on live right now. Let people see that, hey, we know how to behave ourselves as a community and council members and staff. Don't be scared. This is the truth. Thank you. Any announcement from the, the council? Anybody wanna say something from yesterday? No? Okay, covered it.
Yeah, and I think he wanted to, uh, let you guys say a few words, as this is your first City Council meeting, and you guys were just, uh, sworn in last night, so he wanted to give you the opportunity to say a few words at this time, if you would like to.
Please.
Well, start with two.
Okay, two, Mr. Andy Knockan.
Am I hot?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity to serve. I really appreciate it. It's quite an honor to be up here again. Now, I missed those four years I was gone, but I'm glad to be back, and I'll be looking forward to working with Mayor President Gilry and all the staff. Yeah, it almost feels, it feels like coming back home again, you know, like, uh, it's all, it's all fresh. But thank you again for the opportunity, and I will not disappoint. Take care. Thank you.
Ms. Abear?
Pure pressure, everyone's talking. I'll do it. Well, thank you, a special thank you to my constituents in District City Council, District 3. Thank you for the honor of serving you again. Uh, I look for, I'm disappointed to lose some of my old constituents that I grew close to the last four years, but I know Nanette will treat them right over in District 4. We've already been working together to get that coordinated, so they know, we don't miss a beat. Uh, I look forward to serving some of my new constituents in the new part of my district. Again, thank you for trusting me to represent you, and I look forward to another four years. Thank you.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you so much, um, without being repetitive, uh, but unfortunately, we probably will be repetitive. If I were District 1, it would be different. I'm 4, so you've heard it a few times now. But, um, again, thank you all for the opportunity to be sitting up here, especially to my constituents in District 4. And like Liz, I'll miss some of the people that I did lose in the, in, in my District 7 before, but I look forward to representing the new group of individuals in District 4 as well. Look forward to working with the new administration, with the new council, and I am feeling very optimistic. I think we're gonna have a good, a good start to 2020, so I, I thank you for all your support. Thank you.
Mr. Lazar?
Am I?
You're ready.
You're ready.
Guess I'm gonna need to fight up here. Being that everybody else has served before, uh, certainly honored and privileged to have the opportunity, uh, to serve the residents and stakeholders of District 5. Uh, certainly wanna thank God for guiding me on this journey. I know Kevin's not still here, but Kevin mentioned earlier the situation that he's gone through with his family. Several weeks into the campaign, uh, I was diagnosed with leukemia. So that's something I'm dealing with as we speak. But I'm good, though. I'm good. Certainly wanna thank God for guiding me thus far, and I know he's gonna guide me the rest of the way. Wanna thank my wife for being the glue. Elaine, if you don't mind, can you please stand? For being the glue that kept everything together as we were going through this turmoil. When I first started this campaign, I had a plan. I was gonna take a direct route from the courthouse to this seat. Had to make a few detours along the way, but I'm here, thank God. Certainly honored to serve with Andy, Liz, Pat, and Nanette. And I've already told them to, uh, I got all of them on speed dial. And I won't, and I won't be shy to call. As we know, uh, there are numerous issues that we have to deal with. Challenges are gonna be very daunting, but with challenges come opportunities. Uh, I'm honored to be here and, uh, look forward certainly to working with my fellow council members, those on the parish side, as well as the administration, uh, as we move Lafayette forward. And just remember, at the end of the day, ultimately, we're gonna be judged by how we treat the least among us. Thank you.
Is there any other council member, I mean announcements, any other council, okay? Executive Mayor President's Report. Uh, Mr. Gilery, do you have any reports for us today, or representative?
Yeah. Okay, yes, sir, we do. Briefly, and I'd like to start off with saying how much of an honor this is to serve as your Mayor President, and I'm looking forward to the, to the future. It is also very much a distinct honor to serve with these five individuals in the City Council. I'm excited about the future with you guys, and, uh, I respect each one of you immensely, and I know that we, together, we can do great things, so thank you. Um, not much on the agenda for the Mayor President's office, uh, mainly budget and a few other items, but I'll let Ms. Lori Toops take over from here.
Hi. The first item is a budget-to-actual comparison of major funds. For the benefit of Mr. Knockan and Mr. Lazar, I'll give you a brief explanation of this. You will see this every month. I'm not gonna take your time every month. Uh, I'll just be real brief. But, uh, what this is, is a few years ago, the Legislative Auditor intervened in local government, um, finance procedures. There were a number of local governments in the state of Louisiana that were not keeping their finances up to date. Certainly, it was not Lafayette, we're always up to date, but there were governments that weren't issuing financial statements for months and giving information to their councils. So the Legislative Auditor issued a set of rules. We called them agreed-upon procedures. And the, in this list of agreed-upon procedures, we have to provide our governing body every month with a budget-to-actual comparison of our financial statements. And we separated the city funds and the parish funds for, for these purposes. We have tens of thousands of accounts. Some of them I'm very familiar with. But when you look at this report, if you would like me to be prepared to discuss a particular account, I, it, it would be helpful for you to provide me with that information ahead of time in an email, or if you're just curious, you don't want it addressed at a meeting, but you're curious about a, a particular account, you can always email me, and I can give you that information. Certainly, some of the stuff I know right off my, off the tip of my, uh, it's in my brain, it's on my radar, but there's a lot of things that aren't. So, uh, when you look through that, I encourage you to look through it. Um, please reach out to me, and we will certainly get your answers to your questions. Now, part of the Legislative Auditor's rules was that we do this monthly. We put it on the agenda as an item, and it has to be reflected in the minutes. So that's why we take the time to do this during, uh, during a council meeting, and like I said, it'll be once a month. That being said, that, that's the first item, number A. I'll, I'll roll right into B, if it's okay with you. B is, uh, some bids that are recommended for award, and Thomasina, our purchasing manager, is here with this, uh, to represent this item, or to present this item, I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Thomasina Oliver. I am the Purchasing and Property Manager. These items are all inventory stock items for this, in these contracts in particular for LUS. Therefore, purchasing needs City Council approval to award them to the low-evaluated bidders.
Okay, I need a motion and a second to award the bid. Okay, motion by Mr. Andy Knockan, and second by Ms. Nanette Cook. Council discussion? Any public comments?
No, sir.
Call for the vote, please.
District 3.
You can use your monitors.
Yeah, you can use your monitors.
District 4.
Yes.
District 5.
Yes.
District 1.
Yes.
District 2.
Yes.
The motion is approved.
Cindy, read the next item, please.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I could conclude the mayor's report with one other item that I forgot.
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, also, wanna announce our new Chief Administrative Officer, Beth Gidry. She's doing a fantastic job, and I'm looking forward to also serving with this wonderful lady to my right.
Yes, sir. Okay, Cindy, please read the next item.
City Resolution 1, 2020, a resolution of the City Lafayette City Council approving the appointment of Gregory J. Logan as Lafayette City Parish Attorney and Director of the Legal Department.
Move, move by Ms. Abear, and second by Ms. Nanette Cook. Council discussion? I have a question, Mr. Mayor President. Uh, what derive, uh, for this change of, uh, what you wanna do with the legal department, please?
The intent behind this, this nomination is terrain and cost. Uh, that's a, the big focus of mine in this administration across the board, but, uh, specifically, the legal fees that we've spent in the previous years, uh, I believe with this, this administrative approach, um, we'll address that. Uh, Paul Esq., my, my, uh, dear friend over here, is, um, you're still gonna see him as, as he is sitting right now. Uh, he will be available to the councils, and he will be the Assistant City Parish Attorney, with your blessing, to actually attend the council meetings. Um, and I am requesting that the council approve my nomination.
And the Parish Council approved.
The Parish Council approved, okay, the Parish Council has approved. Okay, uh, any public comments?
No, sir.
Okay, let's have a vote to adopt this resolution.
And Mr. Chair, if, with your permission, I would ask Mr. Logan, who is present, to stand as well. Now you're pressured to say yes.
Okay, a vote from the council adopt the resolution.
District 4.
Yes.
District 5.
Uh, yes.
District 1.
Yes.
District 2.
Yes.
District 3.
Yes.
The motion to adopt the resolution is approved.
Okay, consider appointments by the City Council as a whole to boards and commissions. Read, please, uh, I'm sorry, uh, yes, read the next item, Cindy.
Appointment to the City of Lafayette Planning and Zoning Commission for a five-year term effective January 7th, 2020, advocates must be City of Lafayette residents.
There are five to be appointed. The resume received for considerations are from Andre Bro, Madeline Brumley, Diana Corey, Jared Daly, Jared Doles, Elzina Durell, Josh Edmund, Bradley Frizzell, Blair Green, Stephen Abear, William Carter, Miss, Alexander Lazar, Jonathan Lejeune, Selena Lorman, Stanford McNabb, Burley Pellerin, Garland Pennison, Mark Petrie, Alex Porchica, Cory Schiff, and Emily Stevenson. There are no incumbents. Any nomination from the council, please? Yes. Any, any nomination from the council?
I'd like to nominate Jared Doese.
Nominate Ms. Jared Doese from Ms. Nanette Cook? Jared Doese. Any other nominations?
I'm, I'm next. I don't know if you wanna go in your order, or?
Oh, no, I, yes, we can go in order.
I would like to nominate Mark Pritchett.
Mark Pritchett by Ms. Liz. Any other nominations?
Uh, yes, I would like to nominate, uh, Elzina Durell.
Elzina Durell has been nominated. Any other?
Burley Pellerin.
Burley Pellerin by Mr. Andy Knockan. Okay, hold on, hold on a sec.
I have a, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So typically, when, is my mic hot?
Oh, let me get, let me get it hot.
So typically, in the past and previous council, we've only done one at a time, or, but this time, we're doing five. We have five options. Uh, what is the best way, maybe, how did, especially in this situation, how'd the Parish Council nominate theirs?
We, we take them one at a time. They are identified on the agenda, 7 through 11, so we take one appointment, and you vote on one individual applicant at a time.
Okay, so.
I mean, and you can have three nominees.
Got it.
To select from.
Right.
But keep in mind, it takes three.
It takes three.
Yes, sir.
To approve one. So, right now, we have on the floor, we have one, two, three.
We have four on the floor.
Four, four right now.
And Mr. Chairman, also, just as a reminder to the council, the, the first appointment, uh, Item 7, is for a five-year term, and then they progressively reduce in term years. So, that's just something else that you need to be aware of.
So, so they do decrease. The first one is for five years.
And then the second is for four.
So, so, so I was being that, saying that, I think we need to do one at a time, since the first one is for five years, is decreasing. So, uh, council members, I think what we need to do is do one at a time. This one here that we nominated is for five years.
On your agenda, you should see, uh, Item 7. It, it actually reads in the, um, item number what the number year term is. So, Item 7 is five years, Item 8 is four, uh, Item 9 is three, Item 10 is two, and Item 11 is one year.
Yes, okay. I think we understand that, so I think we need to, uh, backtrack, if we can, if so, and we'll.
So, would you like to, uh, eliminate the nominees that you originally did and start over on the nominations?
On the nominee, and remember, council member, this is for, this nomination is for five years. And we'll, the window, as we continue nominating, so.
Well, you still have a queue going. I don't know if you wanna go back to the floor?
Yeah.
For nominations.
Yeah, for nominations.
Take new nominations.
Yeah, I'm cleared.
Just give the floor the next person. I'd like to nominate Mark Pritchett.
Okay, Mr. Pritchett by Ms. Abear. So we don't close it then, right? That's clo, we'll close.
Close the nominations.
Yeah, let's close the nomination, and then let's get a vote on Mr. Mark Pritchett.
District 5.
Yes.
Pritchett, just say that, the name.
District one.
Mark Pritchett.
District two.
Yes.
District three.
Mark Pritchett.
District four.
Yes, Mark Pritchett.
Mark Pritchett is appointed.
For a five-year term.
Okay, this one has been for five-year term.
I would like to nominate Elzina Durell.
Okay, Ms. Elzina Durell is nominated for four-year term.
Mr. Chairman, let's, before we do that, let's let the clerk read Item 8, and then you can make your.
Yeah, she has to read it, yes.
Appointment to the City of Lafayette Planning and Zoning Commission for a four-year term effective January 7th, 2020. Advocates must be City of Lafayette residents.
Okay, nomination for a four-year term to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Any nomination?
I'd nominate Ms. Elzina Durell.
Okay, Ms. Elzina Durell has been nominated by Mr. Glenn Lazar. Okay, then we'll close the nomination. Call, please.
District one.
Ms. Durell.
District two.
Durell.
District three.
Durell.
District four.
Durell.
District five.
Durell.
Elzina Durell is appointed for four years.
Okay, Cindy, please read.
Appointment to the City of Lafayette Planning and Zoning Commission for a three-year term effective January 7th, 2020. Advocates must be City of Lafayette residents.
Okay, any nomination for this term here would be for three years.
I'd like to nominate Jared Does.
Okay, Mr. Jared Doe has been nominated by Ms. Cook. Let's close the nominations.
District two. District three.
Does.
District four.
Does.
District five.
Do.
District one.
Does.
Jared Does is appointed for three years.
Cindy, read, please, the next item.
Appointment to the City of Lafayette Planning and Zoning Commission for a two-year term effective January 7th, 2020. Advocates must be City of Lafayette residents.
Okay, council member, this is for a two-year on the Planning and Zoning Commission, two-year term. Any nominations? Mr. Andy Nakhan nominates, again, sir?
Burley Pelleran.
Burley Pelleran.
I'd like to nominate Blair Green.
Ms. Cook nominates Blair Green. Okay, let's close the nominations.
And you will vote by saying either Pelleran or Green.
Pelleran or Greens. Let's have the vote, please.
District three.
Green.
District four.
Green.
District five.
Pelleran.
District one.
Green.
District two.
Pelleran.
Blair Green is appointed for two years.
Cindy, read the next item, please.
Appointment to the City of Lafayette Planning and Zoning Commission for a one-year term effective January 7th, 2020. Advocates must be City of Lafayette residents.
Council member, this is for a one-year term on the Planning and Zoning.
I'd like to nominate Burley Pelleran.
Burley Pelleran by Mr. Nakhan. Any more nomination? Let's close the nomination. Need a vote, please?
District four.
Pelleran.
District five.
Pelleran.
District one.
Pelleran.
District two.
Pelleran.
District three.
Pelleran.
Burley Pelleran II is appointed for one year.
Okay, let's have the introductory ordinance. I need a motion and a second from the council to introduce ordinance, Item 12 through 19 in Global. Motion by Ms. Liz Abear, second by Ms. Nanette Cook. Cindy, please read.
City Ordinance 1, 2020, in order to the Lafayette City Council, I mean the Unified Development Code, and the official map of the City of Lafayette, providing for the annexation of additional land into the corporate limits of the City of Lafayette, Louisiana, case number zero in 2019-0032, 2600 North University Avenue Annexation, located generally east of North University Avenue, south of West Point de Mouton Road, and north of Sunny Roy Lane, and assigning a zoning classification of commercial-heavy District One. City Ordinance 2, 2020, in order to the Lafayette City Council, I mean the Unified Development Code, so as to reclassify the property of Talon Estates LLC, case number zero in 2019-0034, 3701 West Pinhook Road rezoning, located generally on the northeast corner of West Pinhook Road and Sparrow Hawk Street. The particular parcel is being rezoned from agricultural to mixed-use neighborhood. City Ordinance 3, 2020, in order to the Lafayette City Council, I mean the Unified Development Code, so as to reclassify the property of JL Real Estate LLC, case number zero in 2019-0035, 201 and 203 Plateau Road rezoning, located generally north of Plateau Road, south of Pillet Road, and south of Vero School Road. The particular parcels being rezoned from mixed-use neighborhood to residential mix. City Ordinance 4, 2020, in order to the Lafayette City Council, I mean the Unified Development Code, so as to reclassify the property of Sapient Restaurants LLC, Ryan Pico, case number zero in 2019-0036. 117 South College Road rezoning, located generally east on South College Road, north of Myrtle Street and west of Amarellis Drive. The particular parcel being rezoned from mixed-use neighborhood to mixed-use neighborhood with a conditional use permit for a restaurant. City Ordinance 5, 2020, in order to the Lafayette City Council, I mean the Unified Development Code, and the official map of the City of Lafayette, providing for the annexation of additional land into the corporate limits of the City of Lafayette, Louisiana, case number zero in 2019-0037, 103 Porter Lane Annexation, located generally north of Porter Lane, east of Turlings Drive, and west of Saint Marguerite Street, and assigning a zoning classification of residential single-family District Five. City Ordinance 6, 2020, in order to the Lafayette City Council, I mean the Unified Development Code, and the official map of the City of Lafayette, providing for the annexation of additional land into the corporate limits of the City of Lafayette, Louisiana, case number zero in 2019-0038, 3011B North University Avenue Annexation, located generally west of North University Avenue, north of Dugall Road, and south of Malaport Road, and assigning a zoning classification of residential single-family District One. City Ordinance 7, 2020, in order to the Lafayette City Council authorizing the Lafayette Police Department to trade in two older CVS-A2 systems towards the purchase of two new CVS-A3 instruments. City Ordinance 8, 2020, in order to the Lafayette City Council authorizing the Lafayette Mayor President to accept certain property described here and after for the purpose of operating and maintaining this necessary sewer lift station facility.
Any comments from the public concerned above introductory items, ordinance?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we did have one individual signed in for number 15, Ryan Pico, with reference to the Sapient Restaurants rezoning. He just wanted to see if you had any questions, and he's here and available to answer any questions. You have none, you can move on.
Move on. Any council discussions? Any public comments?
No, sir.
Okay. Call for the vote to these introductory items in Global, 12 through 19.
District five.
You can vote on your monitors.
Vote on your monitors.
District five.
Yes.
District one.
Yes.
District two.
Yes.
District three.
Yes.
District four.
Yes.
The motion to introduce in Global is approved.
Our first City Council meeting has been adjourned. That was quick, huh?